Hi, good evening. I'd like to reconvene back up in open session if you'd all rise when we start the pledge of allegiance. And following pledge allegiance, we'll have a moment of silence for those who can... The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. With that, I'd like to open up for comments from the general public this evening. Is there anyone who has comments from the public? Pratt?
That's Steve Pratt, Weston Street. I just wanted to follow up on the board of selectmen's meeting from last week, and I know on the agenda tonight, there'll be some discussion about going forward and requesting a statement of interest in the non-binding referendum. And I just want to offer my concerns of going back to the voters again with a similar plan that has been, in part, because I can't accept what's been presented previously as being the school project. The voters, you know, know what they voted on. I believe that they had the information. What it concerns me is that, you know, the original statement of interest was submitted more than six years ago, in November 2006, more than 1,100 school days ago. And whenever this is decided, we're going to have perhaps another 400 more days of construction and everything else like that before we get a new school. So what my concern is, and what I plead to the school committee and the school administration, is that whatever is presented, that is thought out, that this time we get it right, that we present to the voters a plan that is not only what we need educationally for the students, but what the town can afford. Now, we've talked about this multiple times, year after year, and, you know, I can't even imagine the number of hours that Liz has spent on this. I know the number of hours I've spent on it, and I probably can count it by, multiply it by 100, what she's spent on it. We have to get this right, and we can't do things off of emotion. That is what concerns me more than anything, and that is why I really caution rushing into making any decisions as to putting something together by next Tuesday. You know, we have until April 10th to submit a statement of interest. We have until the middle of March to put a non-binding question before the board is, before the on-ballot. You have 35 days prior to the April 27th. We need to do it right this time, and we need to not only listen to what has been the previous votes, but hear what the previous votes were. You know, we can do all the surveys and focus groups and forums, and we've done them. And we all know one thing is true: we need to do something to the elementary schools. There's no question about it. The question is how and how much. And this time, we just got to get it right, because I'm not personally, I don't want to go through 2010 and 2011 again, and I don't think any of you do. So please, keep that in mind for whatever decisions you do make tonight, and please keep in mind that there are more people in this town that want to resolve this, that fight this. The people who are opposed against this are not opposed to an elementary school, renovations, constructions, what have you. Let's not be divisive as we were in 2010 and 2011. We have to come together to a solution, which means that we can't make people who have different ideas look out to be opposed to the school, and that's what happened in '09 and '10 and '11, because I know, I was recipient of that. And I'm here tonight to say to you once again, I'm not opposed to the school project. We spent a lot of time coming up with financial plans and how to do this. We didn't get to where we wanted to be. Let's try to get it right this time, without alienating the town, without dividing the town, without creating sides. We need to get this right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Any other comments from the general public this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to comments from the P C.
Let the record show that Donna Ramsey pres- oops. Let the record show that I am present this evening, and I have no comment, except for "Keep on keeping on."
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move to update from the Student Advisory Council or the Captain's Council. I see we have some chairs. Guys, want to come up and come to the mic?
You can pull up a chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Should I introduce myself?
Please do.
Okay. I'm Alex Rosen. I'm president of Captain's Council at Carver High School, and we recently, over Christmas vacation, had a mini camp for elementary and primary school kids, and we taught them soccer and basketball over two days. And we had 17 kids participate, which was a little less than last year, but it was still, it was still a good time. They all had fun and learned a lot. And we're also deciding on whether to hold another one in February.
And I'm Rachel Lozon, captain of the girls' track team, and this upcoming week, January 24th, we're holding a school-wide volleyball tournament at 12:30, and there's about 11 teams signed up so far. So it's just to get active involvement in the school through the Captain's Council.
Yep.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you.
Come on up, Representative of the Student Council.
I'm Sam Reed, president of the Executive Board, and I just want to go over a few past events and one that is going to be coming up pretty soon, so. On December 4th, the Student Council hosted its annual elementary school half-day stay-and-play event. So for $10, students in grades K through 5 hung out with 25 of us StuCo kids from the high school, and it began at 9:30 a.m. and ended around 3:00. And the Student Council worked with teachers and kids in the classroom, and we ran like craft activities and games, and we ate lunch, and there was, I think, 107 kids that attended, so it was, we had, we had, I mean, I think that, I believe that was more than last year, so that was a, that was a win-win. And we, I, we as a board, we'd just like to thank all the teachers and staff and the kids who were involved in this event. Next, on December 20th, the StuCo sponsored an appreciation holiday dinner for all the high school's teachers and staff members who signed up. So we had approximately 30 adults in attendance, and we wanted to thank those who attended. Lastly, on December 21st, the StuCo sponsored making snowflakes for the kids of Newtown, Connecticut. So the Parent Teacher Association organized a nationwide event to encourage schools and communities to make and send snowflakes to Newton. So when the kids went back to school, their school would look, obviously look pretty with all the nice snowflakes. And we ended up, as a high school, sending 550 snowflakes, so. For our upcoming event on January 22nd, the StuCo is organizing a stress-free day during the first day of mid-years. So we'll just be giving out a free dessert for all 9 through 12 students who want one, but we don't know what the desserts are yet, so. That's it.
Can I encourage you, our community, to take part in that stress-free day? I will miss that one. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So you guys have been quite active, so keep up the great work. With that, we will move to approval of our minutes. First, December 10th, 2012, regular session.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of December 10th.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second, that.
We have a motion and a second, and discussion about the minutes. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
With that, we'll move on. I believe there was in your packet that you saw for the executive session minutes of December 10th, 2012.
And there's a correction. You want to tell them about that, James?
It was a cut-and-paste issue where part of minutes from a different meeting were added on to the bottom of that there.
So, and read the corrected ones.
These are the corrected ones. We would have that. No chance to look those over?
Yeah, same thing.
I make a motion to approve the executive session minutes of December 10th.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second, that.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any animus? Ready? With that, we'll move on to communication.
Yes. Two communications came in after we sent after packets on Friday, so just calling to your attention that some very nice article about the new mobile app that you can put on your cell phone by going onto the Carver, www.carver.org website and downloading either the Android or the Apple app, and you can check on your child's bus schedule, find out what's for lunch today, you can pay your school lunch fees, you can look at your child's grades if you're at the middle high school, so it's something available for everyone. I wanted to thank the Carver reporter for making it so apparent to people who are their readers. The other thing that came in after was, we got a nice letter from the New England Schools and Colleges, and I thought I'd let Scott share it with you. NEAS.
So I believe at our November meeting, I made a presentation of the overview of the findings of the NEAS report that was sent to us, and at that time, I said that the commission had just met, but we didn't hear the status in terms of what our official accreditation status was going to be. And so we just formally received this letter on Friday, which officially announces our status, and so our status is continued accreditation, which was, that was our goal of the status that we would receive. So, remember at that meeting, I said there were kind of, there were three places we could be. We could be continued, just continued accreditation. We could be continued accreditation with placement on a warning, feeling that they, that we were really, had been deficient in one or two standards, or those possibility of placement on probation. So we did, we got the full continued accreditation, so that is, that's a, that's a good report. Then, obviously, the notification here goes through some specific areas of commendation and then some specific areas of recommendation. And in those recommendations, they have a group of highlight recommendations that we need to address, and then they have, they've also requested one special report, which I have to do by August 1st of this year, which I will get that to them. But I just thought it was great that we had continued accreditation, and wanted to share that with the committee. Any, any questions or concerns?
I want to say thank you from the perspective of, there's a lot of work that we do, there's a lot of volunteers, students, as well as faculty and staff.
Students, parents, we had a lot of parents who were actively involved in the entire process, and, you know, the entire faculty. You know, so it's really, it's about a year and a half or two years of preparation for the visit itself, and a lot of work goes into that, and, and everyone did an outstanding job.
Did you, did they have any, did they tell you to make any improvements on anything that you were surprised about, or you knew?
So this, what's contained in this letter, all the recommendations that are here, are word for word from the recommendations in the report. So there's nothing different that comes in this letter that was different than the report that I had presented in November. But ultimately, it has the, but in the November, in the original, when they send you a report back, they don't give you your, their vote on the status. So what happens is, there was that meeting in October where the NEAS Commission meets, they read the entire report, and they look at all the commendations and recommendations that the committee, the visiting committee came up with, and then they vote on an official status. So the only thing that's new in this letter is the vote on the official status. So everything else here is taken directly from the report, which I already had in place.
Thank you again. That was a lot of work.
You know, and to commend, when they started this process, the middle high school was a newly combined school, and the middle school teachers had never been through this process before, unless they'd taught in a high school before. So I think this is especially significant, for a newly merged 6-12 school to come out on top. It's very good.
There were definitely some places, you know, where the middle school, just in terms of language and some of the standards, they just weren't accustomed to it all, and hadn't been working towards them, where the 9 through 12 high school side of the building had been working towards addressing the NEAS standards throughout that time. You know, it's just, it's an ongoing process. But the, in the middle school, 6 through 8 wasn't engaged in that ongoing process. So, but I also think it was a great time for the school to come together, because it gave us a central point and a central set of standards for us all to focus on, and kind of gave us a rallying point in terms of coming together. So I think there's a real positive in that.
I agree with that, and taking it a step further, the number of commendations is pretty incredible at a quick glance. I think it was 26, if I get that right real quick. I mean, that's pretty impressive to have that committee recognize certain things that, you know, were done above and beyond at a very high standard. A lot of congratulations goes out to you and your staff.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Then, the, under Communications A, we had a letter from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which is Tab A in your booklet, under Section 5, and it is announcing, we get these every year, but sometimes it starts in November, sometimes it starts in January. So this year, they are beginning to accept statement of interests throughout the Commonwealth. The period of acceptance is from January 9th, 2013, till April 10th, and it gives you all the information, which I passed on to you, on, you know, how to submit, et cetera. So this is, this is the official notification from MSBA. Second is our enrollment, and if you notice that the elementary school has maintained the same enrollment since September 1, and it's switched around a little bit, because we've brought some students who were in out-of-district placements back to the elementary school, which is good for the children, good for their families, and good for us. So we're very proud of that, and Karen will talk more about that in her presentation. And at the, at the middle high school, the enrollment dropped by 13. So we also brought back a student from out-of-district and, I mean, and also, what's important to note is, two of our special education students, we call it aging out, they turned to be 22, and they no longer get services in district, so that's also a part of that. And then you have the complete detail, you know, attached to the top sheet, so if you have any questions, I hope I have answers.
Many of you understand too, really, our state money comes out of the October numbers, so that's kind of the gauge that we need to most pay attention to, but obviously, as time progresses, really, unfortunately, schools are becoming a business-like, and there's a lot of competition for our young people. And what, it's that $5,000 that districts crave, so to speak, for the students, and how important it is to maintain the great standards that we do to keep the students not wanting to go anywhere. So thank you for those numbers.
You're welcome. So under the reports from the superintendent, our first report is Karen Tykert, our Director of Special Education, pre-K-12, is going to give you her report, and it's, she's, I have to say, she gets a high commendation when she's coming in, way under.
Thank you.
Which is hard work with special education, which is generally an escalating cost, but I'll let her tell her own good news, but I do want to tell the public that, due to feedback, that we decided to break the budget up into several sessions. So we heard about the elementary and high school, middle high school last session, this time it's special education, and we'll hear about other departments next time, and then probably the final budget presentation will be March, so. Karen, it's all yours.
Karen, if you want to bring that little, one of them. Yeah. Thank you. All right. So the, the special education budget is just a little bit more fluid than some of the other ones, because it is impacted by individual student needs and, and our special ed population, which fluctuates frequently. So this is the predicted FY14 budget, but it could change by the end of this year, it could change over the summer. That is just the nature of special ed budgets. There's a couple mandates and just facts about special education budgets that I think are important to just kind of understand when we're looking at them. One of them is FATE, which is Free and Appropriate Public Education, and that's just a mandate that federally funded agencies have to provide free and appropriate education for students with disabilities. That's regardless of how severe the disability is or how, how, you know, what those needs are, we still have to provide that free to the parents, at no cost to the parents. So what's appropriate education is definitely not, doesn't have to be the Cadillac of services, but it has to be the same as the, what we provide students without disabilities. One of the other mandates is the maintenance of effort, which means that we just have to continue to spend at the same level that we always, that we've done previously for special ed. So we can't reduce what we're spending in special education unless there's a huge decline in our population or something like that. So we have to kind of keep our special ed budget level. And then some current facts and trends, you know, special ed takes up about 20% of the overall budget statewide, which is like one in every $5, and the cost of special ed has risen at a faster rate than for regular education students. So the cost of special ed has risen 35% between 2004 and 2010 compared to 24% for regular education. So I think that's just important to look at, it's not just any one particular school district, it's statewide, that the cost of special education just is large for districts. When I'm looking at the special education budget, it doesn't include the salaries of our teachers, special ed staff. The piece of the budget that I work with has kind of these basic categories, and in your binders, I know you were given the FY13 and FY14 budgets broken down a little bit more so that you can look at them and compare them. But the major lines are administrative, which is our computer database program that we use for special ed, and then mailings, paper, and other office supplies. Home hospital instruction, which is services regular ed and special ed students, and that's for any students that are hospitalized for any length of time and that require tutoring. Our summer service program, which is district-wide, contracted services, which is consultation to our staff and to our programs, home services that we provide for some students, and then specialty tutoring and therapies, specialty therapies that we don't have staff for, like vision therapy or assistive technology consult, things like that. And then evaluations that we can't do in district, which largely, some of the main ones that we tend to have to do outside of the district are neuropsychologicals, medicals, vision tracking, central auditory processing, and assistive technology tend to be the big areas that we sometimes have to send out for evaluations. And then the biggest piece of the budget is the out-of-district placements for students that we feel we don't have services for in district that we need to send to alternative schools.
Could I make a comment there?
Yeah.
Many of, some of these are hospital placements that couldn't be carried out in the district, you know, the, the hospital environment. The other thing is that when some severe needs need to be met, they are, have to go to a private placement to meet a specific need, and those tuitions are not regulated by anyone, and they can raise their tuition 25% in one year if they want to. So it's a very difficult part of the budget to manage, because no individual school system has these specific programs that match specific needs. We're lucky that we can make a lot in district programs, but the lack of regulation on the private placements has caused much angst among school committees and superintendents over time, that we really feel like, you know, they're not subject to Proposition 2 and 1/2, yet surprised they'll send you a letter and say this is how much a single tuition is going up. So it's something over time, we need to talk to our legislatures about, that if we're spending public dollars, maybe they ought to look at how they're allowed to increase their tuitions. Very difficult part of it to manage, but you do it very well.
Thank you. Some of the general trends within that piece of the budget that we can kind of control, and that we can kind of move things around as we're able, we've had a decrease in our need for outside evaluations. We've had a decrease in administration costs largely postage, as we are able to email more things and send out a little bit less paper in the mail, which was actually a fairly significant amount of money that we can save that way. And then out-of-district placements in all areas have gone down for Carver, except for high school private schools, and that amount is still up because, largely because of a couple specific residential placements that are very costly and have, as Liz said, increased in cost of the placement. And as those, as we, as we spend a little less money in those areas, we've been able to move and to increase our spending a little bit in materials and curriculum and assistive technology. We've expanded our summer school offerings and programs, and we've expanded our contracted services, especially in terms of tutoring and consultation to our in-district programs, and just kind of extended day programs.
So in other words, students coming to us for, when we say contracted services, we're the contractor?
No, that's just, we're able to like have more people come in to consult for us and provide more services for students and teachers.
Rather than putting them in the specialized places.
Our out-of-district trends, out-of-district placements usually do fluctuate a fair amount, but we're definitely seeing a significant drop at this point. Now, like I said, this is for FY14 is predicted at this time, so, and that could change, but we're predicting only about 13 kids in out-of-district placements next year, and that's down from about 40 in '07. I just want to be clear too, that this isn't like us hurting kids back from out-of-district placements. Some of this has to do with kids aging out and graduating from out-of-district placements, and we do have some kids that are very successfully graduating from out-of-district placements. And then we're just not needing to place as many out-of-districts. So as the years go, we're not replacing those, those same numbers aren't going in. So we're decreasing the number. We do have some kids that we've, have brought back, and, but all of them have been at their request to come back, so it's not anyone that we're, you know, forcing to come back to our programs. They want to come back to programs.
Come back into the, into the general population?
Yeah, and to, and to programs that we've developed that can service their needs within our school buildings. Which, on the next slide, that's the other piece of this decline in out-of-district programs is a development of in-district programs. So in FY10, we developed the middle school MAP program, in FY11, we developed the elementary SPY program. Both those programs service kids with social-emotional disabilities and that are in crisis. They both service regular ed and special ed students, and they were kind of developed following the model of the gap program, which had already been in place at the high school. And then in FY12, we developed the middle school language-based program, which is a program for students with significant communication disabilities or reading disabilities. And this year, we've been rebuilding the elementary alternative learning program. And throughout that whole period, we've been continually to work on our inclusion program and implement a more collaborative and kind of co-teaching, somewhat co-teaching model in our inclusion program. So those things have all, I think the two things, out-of-district trends going down and the increase in in-district programs are working together. That's what's...
One thing is, when you have an in-district program that you thought maybe you have one child, and then we had a student move into the district, and we had already set up a program, so we could just add this student to the already existing program, which, you know, made parents more comfortable, and we're doing, you know, we think a really great service for those families. So Karen really has worked with the teachers to develop these highly specialized programs that help children stay home and be with their peers more often.
Yeah, that's great. Which is what most people want. This is just a quick little pie chart, just shows a little bit more of that movement of, even though that larger area is still big, it's that, still that out-of-district, that's the amount of the special ed budget that I kind of work with, that's out-of-district placements. But as that decreases a little bit, it's gone down from that, like I think it's 81% to 73%, we've been able to expand that contracted services, the summer services, we've been able to expand, the materials and equipment, we've been able to expand. And that bottom number for FY14 is... And that bottom number for FY14 is significantly lower than the FY13, so even that 73% is out of a lower number.
So your point then earlier about maintaining a certain level of funding for that, what sort of grounds then can you decrease like that? Is it based on, based on students then to say, we paid, an example, $50,000 for student X, next year we need to maintain that 50 rather than decreasing, or is it more overall?
Well, so it can decrease, but then, so the point, like that amount that that decreased will actually, it won't show up in the budget that I'm kind of managing, but it will need to go in towards salaries for special ed staff. So it's still being spent with special ed, it's just moving out of this budget and into the salaries budget. And we will need that staffing to expand to meet the needs of the same group of students that we've had that we're just now being able to service more in district than out-of-district.
Be more effective in that.
Right.
And conserve more children.
Right.
And Karen's being asked to report on the part of the budget that she builds. And then Patrick and I will report on the salaries piece, which she's right. We added a teacher and some paraprofessionals to build a new program, which, but in our end-of-the-year reporting to the Department of Education, it all gets counted into our maintenance of effort, the special education teachers. So although she reduced her costs, a little bit has shifted otherwise. But in the long run, because you conserve more than one child in a program, this has, we can absorb a greater impact, you're right, that's exactly it.
And we, I think we could be just more efficient with the funds that we have, and we're in more control of how we're spending and what we're using it for. And a lot of times, regular ed students can also benefit from some of the things you're getting, which, on the next slide. Some of the things we have been able to do.
Let me keep it flicked?
Yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry?
Some of the things we have been able to do with some of that increase, like even a small amount of increase in the materials and, and equipment line, is we've been able to provide some slowly buy whole classroom FM systems at the elementary school, so that's benefiting all students.
You want to tell them what FM system?
Oh, that's the, the system that like just.
Teacher, where's the microphone?
Right. Amplifies, thank you. Amplifies the teacher's voice.
Speakers in the ceiling.
Speakers are in the, in the corners of the rooms. And so it just helps with any kind of background noise, which we have a particular problem with in the elementary school, just because of the buildings. So it just helps, and a lot of times it does help with students that have attentional issues and any kind of students that have any kind of language and hearing issues, so. And then we've, we've been slowly buying iPads, so we're increasing our supply of iPads, Kindles and Nooks for the middle high school. We're increasing our supply of student laptops and software specially designed for students with reading disabilities and writing disabilities. We've been able to increase our accounts with Audible and Bookshare, purchase some furniture for some of the alternative programs. We've spent some of that money on student supplies and teacher supplies such as printer ink. We've gotten some specialties curriculum programs, like DreamBox. DreamBox is a computer-based math, and we've obtained some license for that, and we're monitoring the effectiveness of that. We've bought new assessment tools for the school psychologists and the special ed teachers and just increased our alternative curriculum materials for students and teachers. And just to finish up, you know, there are some just kind of focus goals that I usually have when I'm looking to just kind of work it with the budget. And the biggest one is to work with Scott and Ruby and the off team and just looking at what are the needs, what are the current needs, which can always change, and what are the needs that are best going to fit, meet the students with special needs as well as the larger school community. And then just always look to, to provide services that support all students, things that we can, you know, add, like assistive technology and training and consultation that helps all of us provide services for students that are struggling. And then just moving money towards resources to help teachers provide instruction in the least restrictive environment. And I think the more we can just try to always work to blur the lines between special ed and regular ed and, you know, service all kids all together helps us be more efficient with our resources and is best for the students.
And it was recognized in our commendations as being a huge strength at Carver Middle High School, the programs that Karen has budgeted for.
I think it's amazing. I mean, it's hard enough to have a child that has special needs, but to have someone like you that's going to soften that for the parents and make it easy for them to come into a system, I, I never articulate very well at this time of night. If I asked me at 5:00 in the morning, I could say, oh, why should you?
I appreciate that, thank you.
But I, I think it's great. I really thank you for all your work.
It's definitely been a team effort. I mean, I really, you know, we really work, I think we work well all together to make sure that we have the right programs.
How do you like the inclusive classrooms? How is that working?
I think it's working really well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How are the students, are they all responding on both sides?
Yeah, I know, I've, yeah. I think all students are feeling good with it and the teachers. And we had always had that, I mean, that's always been in there. I think we've just tried to just be stronger with our ability to work together and instruct in different ways. And we do have some students with a little more significant needs that are spending a little more time in the regular ed classrooms, which is really benefiting them and I think benefiting all, all the students.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks a lot. So Dave and I get to talk about the capital plan, and you have a copy under Section B. And I wanted to point out that we added a column this year where we identified what was the most current need over the next year and two or three years, and what would, we could put off as a future need. Every year, one year drops off the capital plan and a new year is added. So, you know, what we spent in 2012, 13 dropped, dropped off this one and was replaced by what we'll need in 14, 13, 14, et cetera. So here's, here it is, and I'm just going to let Dave walk us through it.
Okay. What we have on the far right column, we placed everything for the Governor John Carver and the R and K Washburn Building. And like Liz said, these are prioritized as far as unfortunately what we feel is going to fail first. Hopefully it doesn't. And none of these would be, hopefully we don't have any large failures, because if we were to go to MSBA for money, it would not be awarded because of the, the overall nature of those buildings, and they know our status. So they would not fund any standalone projects if we were to lose.
At the elementary?
At the elementary school, correct. Both of those buildings. So that's why all those are placed in the far right column. Current need is what we feel is our most prone areas or what would, we would want to fund first. But obviously, we're not looking to fund any large projects in those buildings. Those are just what we feel, how, how we would prioritize our needs over there. So that's, that's how they fall. And then we come down to the, the middle high school building, and some of these, anything that was on FY13's capital plan that was not funded, we carried into 2014. So there are some carryovers over there. And the amounts we have are more than Capital Outlay even has under their funding mechanisms. But we, the needs are there. So would you like me to go through line by line?
Well, I think we should talk about the most needy ones, particularly the high school roof.
Okay. The high school roof is actually, it's placed in 2015, so it's in FY2015. However, that roof is original to the building. Carver High School, middle school opened in 1987. It is presently 26 years old. The life expectancy of a rubber roof is 15 to 20 years. So it is beyond its life cycle. We do have some problem areas with it. I am currently trying to get patched up. However, we do need a complete roof replacement on that building. The estimate is $2 to $2.5 million. Now, that is something that is beyond Capital Outlay's funding mechanism. So we would actually go to MSBA and for renovation repair and see what their reimbursement rate would be. I believe it's probably around 50%, if I'm correct.
Yes, several surrounding districts have done roof projects recently with 50%, but of course we can't speak for the future, so we'll just, that's what it is now.
And I would be looking at that time too, to, we would bring an engineer in, look at the roof. At the same time, we would most likely want to do a mechanical upgrade as well because we have a lot of interior classrooms. I believe we have 21 interior classrooms. And there's also other areas that are air-conditioned in that building. We have all split systems, so all of, and we have rooftop units as well. So in order to do a roof project, all those units would have to come off. A lot of those are aged and failing, so at that point, it would be a good time where they have to be removed anyways. We would look at replacing some of those that would kind of go hand in hand. So it might, might not be just a standalone roof project. It might be, maybe because of the money it might be, but if we could also roll in because our mechanical systems are aging as well, all your mechanical is 26 years old.
Does the MSBA fund the mechanical systems as well?
Yes.
Yes. And they particularly would like people to do it simultaneously, because of course you disturb the roof when you do them, in our case, not in all cases, but in our case it would disturb.
So that's, that's our biggest need right now at the high school, other than the issues we talked about earlier with possible changes for security measures. The roof is our biggest need right now at the high school.
It was also cited in the NEES report.
I see the wastewater system as a little rectangle, blank rectangle.
Yes, that is left open because we're presently having that engineered to see what we can do with that. They are actually, we've contracted JC Engineering out of Wareham. They are putting together, they're investigating through the DEP what, to see what we can do with that plant. That plant either needs to be upgraded, either needs a full upgrade, a partial upgrade, or possibly we could do away with it and go to a Title V system. But that's going to be determined by DEP's ruling. So we've contracted JC to investigate that, to see what DEP will allow us to.
They've been, it's been in the state of moderate failure for a while. So they have given us opportunity, DEP, to have this engineer to come up with several solution options, upgrade, replace, or put in a totally different type of system, such as the one we put in at the elementary school. If we could be approved for that, that would definitely be the least cost.
Well, I know last time, Dave, you presented to us, that was kind of the one you were leaning towards due to the enrollment numbers. Would that still be an option in one with any sort of number change to give us some flexibility that we'd still have?
Possibly. I don't know what DEP, DEP looks at totally as far as numbers, if it's by population, it's by potential population, if it's by number of fixtures in the building. So there.
It's flow too.
Yeah.
It's based on flow.
So by the numbers that we average through the plant on flow, we look like we could meet that with some possible changes. But I don't know if that's going to be the only determining factor that weighs in, so we don't know where that stands yet. So we're hoping to hear from them soon. So that number could fluctuate quite a bit depending on which way we have to go.
And Pat seems to think we'll have for the February meeting, the, the report, so hopefully. The other thing I wanted to point out that is, doesn't look like an emergency, but it's becoming more of an issue is the high school gym floor. You want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, I do have prices on that as well to, basically to replace it with another synthetic floor would be $180, I believe it's $180,000. If you were with a wood floor, it brings it up to about $200,000. That floor, I just had some patches put in where the seams are coming apart. What's happening, the seams are pulling apart and separating, and it's become a safety issue. And the patches I just put in, because that floor is so old, we cannot get the same thickness material. So what's there is actually a few mil thicker. So we do have some raised spots. One area is about a 6 by 12 area they cut in, and then there were some smaller ones. And what we did is, my maintenance guy at the high school went in and shaved, once they glued it down, they, he shaved the edges, so it's a, a smooth transfer, and we don't have any sharp edges. But it is higher. But that whole floor is, all the glue, the bonding underneath is dried up and gone. The only thing holding that floor down is the weight of it. It's not glued anymore. It's just the glue, like under your carpet, it's deteriorated and failed. The floor is heavy, so it doesn't move, it's not shifting, but that is something we need to address as well.
What is, for the future, the wood floors, are they more expensive to maintain but lasts longer? I'm interested in the benefits and.
The benefits are, they like them for basketball, they look nice. But honestly, my recommendation, I think the athletic director would like to see a wood floor, I would like to see a synthetic floor. And we've discussed this, and I think the way the building gets used, and I think we'd be better off with a synthetic floor, not only for, I think it would last us longer, it's much more multipurpose. Because if we put a wooden floor in, a lot of sports teams within the school and also outside users that use it for baseball in the winter, that would have to stop. We do not have live baseball in the gym. It's just the wood floors don't stand up to it. If you have someone walk across in football cleats and a synthetic floor, it's not a problem. If they do it in a wood floor, it's a problem.
And ladies in high heels.
Mm-hmm. But yeah, for promenade and everything, it gets, it gets a lot of use. And a wood floor, it's much more, it's more costly to install, and it's also much more costly. The way that floor gets used, you would probably be looking at refinishing it every summer. And to refinish a floor that size, you're looking at about, if you were to contract it out, about $10,000 to refinish that every summer, which is an add expense, which right now I probably put down about $200 worth of wax on it in the summer. So that would be a significant maintenance increase to go to wood.
Dave, you said, you said it would be around $180, is that?
$180.
The figure here is 300 on this, is that an old estimate?
Yes, yeah.
The, the other thing is that you sometimes don't even realize it, but they turn the lights on for the first class at 7:25, 7:30 in the morning. And with recreation and other activities, it's used till 9 o'clock at night, pretty much seven days a week with recreation, basketball this time of year. So it's a very high-use area. Now, the lighting that we put in saves us money now, because only the part of the gym someone's moving in do the lights stay on. So used to be, gyms can take up to 6% of your electricity. But when we did the energy audit about five or six years ago.
Yes.
Then we switched to this only motion activated, so which has saved us some money. But our gyms, all of them, there are four of them, one in each building at the elementary school and one on the middle school side, one on the high school side. High use all the time.
Well, and yeah, from the purist, wood floors are very nice to look at, and from a player's standpoint, I always love to play on wood better than rubber, but today's point, you're talking tarps, you're talking public voting, and the amount of foot traffic, it does go on, and it does make logical sense to put the dollars in, in more of a practical floor.
You know, and all of these things are pushed out a little bit in the future, but I think it is important that we talk about them so that we're prepared that the new, the new building is 26 years old.
Dave, you talk about the floor completely, I mean, were you talking any knee damage potentially to athletes, or?
No, I don't, no, I looked at it with the athletic director, and we finally waxed the, the new areas, so it's, it's basically the same adherent, you know, it's not like you're going from wax to non-wax.
Yeah, I mean, the floor in general, since it's detached.
It's, no, the weight of it down, it's not shifting, but the issue is where, because that is, that floor is laid out, it's not a poured floor, it's laid out in sheets. And where we have two seams like this, you're seeing the seams start to separate across the whole floor.
It is a poured floor.
Yeah.
Could we get a poured floor? I mean, is that a common?
I don't know if they pour them that size or not. It's something I could look into.
Just doesn't seem like things are made the way, obviously, the way they used to be, and you just wonder how long it will last.
So the process is that we will take this to capital outlet. So the process is that we will take this to Capitol Outlay and have a, you know, big discussion, and we make our recommendations of the most needy based on our plan. Dave and Pat and I go, and Lance, you're part of that, and Kevin is part of it, but he can't go because they choose to meet on Saturday morning, so we probably should have one other person think about who might be able to go to Capitol Outlay in, in February.
Sure.
I don't know if they've given us the exact date, but I can get back to you.
I can make it.
You can make it, that'd be great. I'll let you know tomorrow, I'm gonna give this plan to Ron Clark tomorrow and I'll let you know.
Sure.
Thanks. Questions? Comments? So, should I go on to recommendations? So, on the recommendation A, the Board of Selectmen at their meeting last week requested that the school department, finance committee, and the Board of Selectmen in Capitol Outlay come together to discuss whether or not to take a joint vote to submit a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority during this current opening period between January 9th and April 10th. And honestly, I had not had this on my radar for this year until a very large group of citizens approached me. And I believe there's between 200 and 300 of them on their Facebook page who really want this to happen. And so, since I work for the town, I had to listen to them, and so I bring it to you for your consideration. As it stands now with MSBA, the only path for Carver back in, which was in our final letter from them when we were kicked out of the pipeline, is to submit the statement of interest during their opening period and to have a non-binding referendum. The statement of interest period will end on April 10th, but I did talk to MSBA and that's fine, because our election wouldn't be April 27th. They don't really look at them till after May something. So as long as both of those things happened, and if it happened positively, we'd be eligible for consideration. They usually meet last week of June, first week of July, to select which communities that they will take back into the pipeline, if you've been out before, or most of them actually are new applications. So we, that's our timeline.
Now, just for clarification, the statement of interest, is that basically just a letter stating that the town supports us in moving forward to collect votes? Or is it a detailed letter? Going back to what Stephen said earlier, I agree that we need to bring the town together. And I just wanna clarify, what is in the statement of interest? Is it literally a one paragraph thing, or is it a-
No, it's, it's a huge, huge big project. I have it in the other room, I was looking through it to see what, it's a blue notebook that's this thick in the other room, which I don't have to do all of that over, cause a lot of it is our maintenance records for the past 10 years and things like that, I just add what's missing. So, and they've assured me that they, instead of submitting all this by paper now, that it's all electronic. So they will pre-populate the statement of interest with everything we've already submitted, and I would only have to change what they actually required. And most of it is how they determine your need, so you have to give them all this stuff to, so when they determine your need, it's-
Now, when you say that, you may basically mean the overall condition of the buildings?
Yes. And what we have are two engineer studies, one that was done in 2005, 2006, one that was done in 2008, 2009, which they bring engineers from other states to look at all your facilities and determine your current need. I guess we'll be up for another one in a year and a half. And so the results of that are in there, and what the engineers recommend, to see if you meet, meet a certain threshold of need for a statement of interest. There are no detailed plans in here, there's no solution in this. This is all records of the conditions of your building, previous site visits, the population studies that they did before. I would, I no longer have to enter them, cause they just get all the information right off the DESA website, so-
And two from the letter you gave us from the MSBA, I mean, they lay it out, they say the SOI, SOI allows the district to inform the MSBA about deficiencies that may exist in the school facility and how these deficiencies inhibit the delivery of the school's educational program. So really it's just, what's wrong and how does it inhibit the students from learning? So that's really what this is about at this point.
And they give you a certain way to present it, but there is no plan for a solution in here, so it's not-
I just wanted to make certain, and for anybody who may see this on television to recognize that, the letter that's to be sent, the statement of interest, isn't really a plan, it's the first step. And so it's not like we have an idea and we're gonna bring it to the town, there's not, there's not a proposal yet, this is the very first step.
It is the very first step, but it's also the gate. If you don't go in while it's open, then you wait till next year. If we go in while it's open, we have a non-binding, and we make a plan, then they sift through our plan and tell us if they would accept it. So, but that's, the first step is while the statement of interest gateway is open, we submit what new information they need, you know, and take, they take into consideration what we had before. In our case, they're very specific because they have a lot more information about us than they do about anybody else with, who's never had a project before with a statement of interest. So, in our final letter, they were very clear that what, the steps by which we had to do this, and this is the first step, the non-binding is the second part, simultaneously really, because it'd be all considered at once. And what they were very clear about is any change in our plans from what they'd already funded through our schematic design and feasibility study, we would have to pay for it with no reimbursement. So any plans we make that are different than what we submitted before would be-
Is that a piece of this though?
No, but they just meant after the statement of interest, whatever plans that we make different, we just have to realize that that would be on our nickel, that's all.
And that's fine, if, you know, if the community gets together and they decide on a project that's different, and we just take the hit, then at least they're aware of it.
Yeah, those, in that final letter, that's just what they said.
Okay.
And then the second part, request B, to discuss, and Steve did quote quite accurately that we have until the middle of March to get on the ballot for a non-binding referendum. But that obligates no one to do anything, except to say in theory the town supports discussing a building project. But it, and allows us to go through the gate. Without that, they just say, forget your statement of interest, come back when you have it.
So, if the meeting with the, this joint meeting that's referenced, is this-
January 22nd.
The 22nd.
And is this gonna be an open discussion between this committee and the Board of Selectmen, and at that point in time, a vote will be taken?
I don't, you know, it's their meeting, so I don't know, I don't know the exact plans. They asked me if I could make sure the school committee would be there, if there were votes to be taken, they asked that at the last meeting, and I said I would do my best. I know that, John Carter was sitting next, or standing next to me, and he said he would have scheduled finance committee to be that night simultaneously, so I do feel like they will be there. And I haven't talked to Ron Clark, but I think the intent is to have a discussion.
Thoughts from the committee on this? I mean, obviously those who are aware of the meeting of the night.
I just basically, you could rewind the tape and play what Steve said, and I've said it for a long time, the community's got to come together, we've gotta build bridges, we gotta, you know, nobody's gonna get everything that they want. Some people have to accept something they may not want, but if it brings that community together and provides support for them, I have been saying it for years, everybody says they know they need a new school, they just couldn't afford it. So we gotta come up with a way to afford it, and then literally leave no stone unturned and, and don't shut down people when they, when they bring up a suggestion of any sort, whether that be cut the school's budget in a particular place. I think, as you've heard me say almost every meeting now for six months, defend the budget, and if it's right, the community will support the budget and add to it as needed. If they don't know that it's right, then they're gonna request that we cut that budget. And I think that as we, as people have seen tonight, and in meetings past and in future meetings, each section of the budget is, is being gone over to what we feel may be bare bones, and if we come across something that can be cut out, help assist the community and get what we want, I think that's a victory.
Well, and I think the point, I think too, to your point on the budget, is it is being presented in sections, so I encourage the community to pay attention throughout these, these meetings, so that they can educate themselves. I would have to admit, prior to getting involved in school committee, I was probably pretty ignorant to what was going on, so I would encourage the committee to be involved and pay attention, cause it is important. So thank you, Kevin. And to add to the sentiments, we'll open up to the committee, any thoughts, James?
Yeah, I mean, I'd actually, I have a difficulty with it right now, and I think because we do have the time to really make sure we're doing this right, that, you know, I think it's pretty clear that, I kinda wanna reiterate what Jack Frani had said the other night, when there was some confusion about looking for a supermajority. It's not that we need a supermajority to win, it's that if this is a good idea, we're gonna, we're gonna get it with more than 51%. We don't need 31 votes, because the votes are gonna be there if this is the right idea. You're never gonna get a 100% vote, but we should be working towards better than just above mediocre, to make sure that this is the right plan. And my concern is that, as you stated, that to go forward after the statement of interest, that there's a large cost because the MSBA isn't gonna be involved in any kind of reimbursement for any other plan besides what was already stated. And my concern is that the push to go forward is gonna be to rely on that, since it is cost-effective, when it's, I hate to say it, but it's pretty clear that it's probably not gonna be the right idea.
Can I just respond?
Sure, please.
What I think is not widely known is that the MSBA, in order to get their money, if we don't want their money, we can do anything we want. But in order to get their portion of it, in the statute for our size building, 500 or more, 600 or more, there has to be 145 square foot per child. So when we went through all 22 options the last time, and we picked the three after big community discussion, I know people weren't, a lot of people weren't paying attention, it was, number one, the cheapest, and number two, it didn't even meet the space requirements. And MSBA may just go back in and add space to it, because it was the most economical design. So I have no vested interest in where we build this, they want it on a new site, it's fine, but what the community needs to be aware of is that we're gonna have, we can't build a smaller building, we have to build 145 if we want reimbursement, okay? If we don't, you can do anything you want. And then the other, the other part of it is, we have to have a debt exclusion for the, if we take MSBA money and just, for last, let's say it was $50 million, okay, for the total project, and if they were gonna give us 50%, I'm hoping it'd be a lot more, then they'd be paying 25, and the town would be paying 25. In order to get their 25, we have to have a debt exclusion for the entire amount. Now how we pay that debt exclusion is up to the town, but we can't exclude all but such and such amount which we'll pay out of this fund, you can't do that. It has to be this whole number debt exclusion. If we don't want-
Does it have to be a debt exclusion, or just the funding for the project?
It has to be a debt exclusion.
To get MSBA?
To get MSBA money, and it's in the statute.
Okay.
So I think that's, those are the two pieces that people didn't understand, I said at the very beginning. I don't care what we do, we have to fix the school. I don't care where it's built, and I don't care which design it is, but we simply can't have children in that environment very much longer. It hasn't been safe for a long time, and it continues to be unsafe. And it's, it's difficult to, I worry about it every day, every single day.
I have two children in that building, so I have a vested interest in what's going on. Definitely.
So, you know, and it's just, and it's not in us and them, it's just we have to come up with a solution that meets all the MSBA requirements and/or town has to decide they'll pay it all themselves, because otherwise, there's no short end run around it, as far as funding and the size of the building. And they're not gonna fund parts of it, they were very clear to us, don't bring us this laundry list of things that need to be renovated, we won't give you any money, because they consider that building completely a god, MSBA.
Yeah, I have a, you see, I've never seen it, and I kinda went through the same thing with the solar issue in this town, and this, this idea of sides. And, I mean, everybody that lives here is in Carver, and everybody pretty much agrees that we need a new school, and it's not the solution, it's the plan, it's, it's how do we get to that solution, that's the issue. And in there, there aren't sides, there's just different ideas, and those ideas need to be brought together the right way, to make it happen the right way. Obviously, whenever you involve the state, there's a lot more involved than you would ever want. But I think that a really clear picture and process of how that's gonna happen is really what's gonna help make everything more comfortable. And again, I wasn't involved in that first process, so I can't attest to what was done in that process.
And I think that's the case for most of these young parents that have come forth now, that many of them didn't live in Carver, actually, they've bought homes since, and the other half of them had two and three-year-olds, so they weren't, they weren't invested in it yet. Now that they are, they're really invested in, they didn't go through any of this process, so they just need to hear it with fresh ears, as far as what's required. And, you know, I have seven years of work leaning in that room over there, I sorted through it, I had a lot of questions in the last three weeks, like really detailed questions, that I had to go back and look up all the answers to. So, all the information's there, you know, and I'm happy to provide it to anyone, and I'm sure the principal doesn't care where we built the building or how we get it, it's just, it's very difficult over there right now, especially with the added security pressures.
Well, I think that's another thing to consider now in these times, is also whatever we build, should have the latest security measures built in, so that's a piece of-
The most enlightening piece for me, and I apologize, the most enlightening piece for me has been here, being part of this committee, seeing the constant flow of funds that are being sunk into that rundown building, and how much money we're actually putting in to trying to duct tape it all together. And it's, it's kinda disheartening as to where we need to go to make this happen.
What are our plans for the focus groups? We had that one really successful focus group, and then the last one was not successful, in my eyes, in my opinion.
Which last one did you-
Well, this, this smaller one, we had the Board's, our joint meeting at the-
Oh yes, we just advised the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, but we did have some community members, and it just, you know, I really appreciated that first focus group, when a lot of people had showed up. I felt like it was the first time that we all were on somewhat of a-
We can have as many focus groups as we want.
Well, what is the thoughts on that? I mean, what is, you know, I would like to, we need to take the emotion out of this, and we need to, you know, listen to the facts, and we need to hear all the opinions, and we need to move forward and actually make that happen. I mean, talk is cheap, I wanna see it actually happen, and I, you know, going to that focus group, it really, it felt good, it felt good, it felt like we were all on the same page, cause we had no identity. We were just us as, you know, I guess our one soul identity was citizens.
Well, I think in that, if you're referring to it, kinda had that neutral party to kinda help lead it. And I think that was a great, as you said, a great start to the conversation, I think. To me, I look at it twofold. One is, we're dealing with kind of two pieces, to Steve's point is, as we look at the financial piece, and really that's the crux of this whole discussion, I think we understand as a community, this thing needs to get built, we need to have an environment for our students, we're losing students to other districts, we're losing families to other communities because of our school, and how do we keep that from happening? We provide a tremendous education here in this community, we just have a rundown car, so to speak, and we need, we need something new to, that's going to be adequate, safe for our students. But again, and as we hear in pretty much every meeting in town, it's about the finances. Families are struggling, I think, since I bought my house five years ago, that number every year I look at my tax bill, and my house is less and less, so I'm in the same mood as everyone else. I mean, it's the reality of it, it's where we are in our community. We're not a commerce-based community, we're a resident-based community, that's who we are, so we pay the taxes. But no matter what time we, we understand we're in a difficult time, I think it's the decision made in a difficult time- I think it's the decisions made in a difficult time are really the tough ones, and as a community, we've got to look at that. It's not getting any better. We know that. So, to the community's point, we need to come, and I kind of came in, in this halfway through, so I have seen it kind of as an outsider. I haven't lived here all my life, I've only been here a short time, and there is a lot of divisiveness, I agree. And hopefully, all sides understand that it's time, as we said. I think the rhetoric is there as well. Let's, let's put down our guards and come to the table. I think it's important that we do that, and that's why I look at this kind of twofold. Next, next week's meeting is really us coming back to the state and saying, listen, we need, we need your help, we want to get back involved. So, that's, that's really what I see. No financial numbers involved, but we see the, kind of the, the energy in the community for this, and we want to build on some of that, so let's get back involved. It's with a non-binding, again, no money involved. We want to show the state they were interested in it. And then, through that process, we need to get all parties involved in this community together to really talk financial, to really, because that's, that's, that's the gist of where we're at, is figuring out that financial piece so that as a community, whatever it is, we know something has to be done.
To build on that, is the statement of interest in the non-binding referendum costs us nothing but my time, which you pay anyway, and I'm happy to spend it doing this. We wouldn't hear from MSBA whether or not we were in the pipeline again or considered for it until July. And then there's a whole lot of work that needs to be done to update feasibility or schematics or totally change it, whatever the community would desire. In the earliest, a financial question could come before the community would be November, December of 2013, but more than likely, January, February of 2014. So, in my mind, by simply submitting it, seeing if the community has the appetite through a non-binding, just buys us about nine to 12 months more time to figure out what we want to do. And the other side of it is, if we don't go forward with just saying, we're still interested, we need to make a plan, and we're going to, you know, and then because of what our situation before, we have to do a non-binding just to say that, then we're, we're our 24, 36 more months before we even come near going to a financial decision about the building. So, and during that time, we just discussed all the security needs we have and all the potential failures we have. Meanwhile, in that very same year, we'll have a high school roof. So, it's, I see that this is an opportunity to go forward without making any commitment to a specific plan or specific financing plan, but just to get it back, buy our time back into the process. I'm not wedded to any plan. Want a whole different building? I'll sit down and work with the teachers. The teachers spent hours, you know, telling the architects the needs and special education needs. They do it over again in a heartbeat. But if we, if we don't do it this time, it'll be 36 months before you even discuss the final plan with MSBA.
And during that process, in the very, very beginning, without, leaving to fast forward to where the financial discussion comes into play, is there a way for us to get, because finances are always going to be front of mind. It's kind of like saying, you know, to my wife, and those of you know her, she drives a little spiritedly, but, you know, honey, you want a new car? You got to put bookends to it, because she'll be driving a Lamborghini, and, you know, that's not happening. But you got to put bookends to it. So, I think that the financial piece will come up a little earlier than that.
Well, the community's appetite for spending, yes.
Then that's what I'm saying. So, is there a way to, to corral that and not have a firm estimate, but somehow, let me give you two quick scenarios. Keep it on the same parcel of land and do something similar to what was already proposed, we're going to have a pretty good idea of what those numbers are going to be. Scenario B, go buy land somewhere and build a whole new complex, but we have no idea what that's going to cost us. So, how do you have those conversations without knowing what those amount of monies are going to be prior to the 18, 19, 20 months passing? That's my concern.
Well, they have, there's two cost estimators that come. One is the current cost per square foot of an elementary school, which is very different than the cost per square foot of a high school. That information is available to us right now. So, if we take the 857 children in the elementary school, plus the MSBA likes for you to add 7% to 10% because they don't want a building that you're going to come back and ask for an addition on, and you multiply that by the, the current cost per square foot, you get a, built on an existing lot, you get...
Something.
Something. You get a ballpark. Then they also have a cost estimate for a brand-new site, which, when you build a new school, up to 8% of the total cost of a new school is reimbursable from MSBA for site preparation. So, that includes landscaping, whatever you want to do to it. But, so, they have some figures on, our real conundrum is, is we're a very large elementary school, and they haven't built one of these in a long while, you know? Sort of the biggest one I found, it was in Fall River for 700 some children, but we're still 100 and some above that. So, so there are some ballpark comparisons, but of course, they're not going to be...
And that's okay, but I think that's, I think that's an imperative component to have when you go to have these discussions, because as I explained earlier, my wife would love the Lamborghini, but when she finds out what the cost is going to be, she'll accept the Chevette in a heartbeat.
You know, Kevin, if anyone in here, after the meeting, if you want to go over in the 22 designs, conceptual designs, we cost estimated all of those, but these are $2,000 and $9,000, so they're not very good right now. But that was part of...
And again, I guess part of my biggest point, which I want to make certain is clear, is it's saying what James had said, you know, the plan was not accepted, whether it be for what percentages, was it the amount of money or was it the plan itself? I want everybody to know that the, the canvas is blank, can be whatever you want it to be. But we're still going to need bookends as that conversation starts to develop, and that, that's my main point.
But what I'm saying is, we have mechanisms by which to come up with...
Those numbers.
Pretty good numbers.
Good.
You know, because if you look over there, you remember all those.
I knew it existed. I wanted it to be said.
Yeah. And so, those can be done, but then you have to bring in somebody who knows what they're talking about, you know? Either, we either take the same architects that we've worked with who have all of our plans already and all the cost estimates, or we go back through architecture selection again, you know, through, where the MSBA gets 15 votes and we get one. I don't think you went up to Boston that day. Basically, they picked the people we wanted. They listened to us, which was very gratifying. I wasn't sure when we went up there, they were just going to make a decision and we had to take it. But no, they were, and these are mainly engineers and architects that don't have anything to do with Carver, you know, they're just on their board of directors. So, it's possible to switch, and then you have to still get another owner's project manager, and their job is to check on everything the architects told us. Their job is to cost estimate everything independently to make sure, and then the MSBA does their own cost estimate once you come up with some sort of general conceptual idea. So, the three come together and they give you a cost per square foot on a precise plan. But of course, if we're just doing ball parts, we, we could do that with limited input from the architects and the owner's project manager, but it's not something, it's not something I could do for you, or you, you really have to work with professionals in the field who are doing this every day, you know, the cost per square foot.
But at least we know that those tools are there.
They are there.
So, it will provide a very healthy conversation and unity, hopefully, you know, and not find out after the fact that it was a great conversation, we just can't afford it again.
Well, I think Tuesday's board of selectmen meeting could be very telling if, if, you know, we represent ourselves well and everybody's there, and everyone who's willing to show up tonight is, is willing to be there, and the people, if it's anywhere close to where it was the last time they met, that, you know, you're going to have voices that are heard, and hopefully, we could direct them in the right way to get some good things done. I, I would just like to add one thing on a slightly different note, and it was from that night, and there were a lot of comments made that night, and there's been a lot of talk about how awful and disgusting that building is, and I clearly understand that. You've taken me for a walk through every single door in that building, as well as the high school, to see what's going on. But I do have to say that, that what I feel as a teacher and a parent walking in there is pride, and I think that that's overlooked a lot. Not that that's not something that's, you know, it's very different from what we've been talking about, but the way that building is held together, there may be lots of things that could be done different ways in the past, how did it get to where it is? There's a lot of people that work really hard to keep that a minimal budget to maintain that building, and there's a lot of people that work really hard within that building to maintain a great atmosphere for our children, and, and they've done that for a very long time.
Oh, the teachers make their rooms look like a million dollars.
And I, I didn't hear that mentioned once that night, and I sort of was hoping to be able to get that in somewhere, and I really think that that's an important factor that doesn't change anything, but really needs to be expressed because it is, that's the first thing I feel in that building when I walk in, is the pride of the people that are working in there to do what they're doing and how hard they are to get that done.
The other thing that was mentioned, but it was not really accurate, is that, that the minute we applied to MSBA, we stopped maintaining the building, and that's, that just isn't true. And we have, I have bills and purchase orders and everything possible that we've been able to afford to do, we've done it. I mean, we just have a limited budget, and there's some things we put a priority on to do, and then, then one of the rooftops breaks and we have to have a part manufactured, and that takes up a whole big chunk of the budget we weren't planning on spending. So, but we, I mean, Dave and before him, Paul, no, no people have worked harder than to maintain those buildings, or both of them, well, or three of them, actually. So, that's not accurate. We, we do maintain the buildings. We work as hard as we can every day, and a big part of it is the teachers take care of their own classrooms and make sure, so that we can maintain the building. You know, they really make sure it's not too hot on the custodians that have to clean up every day.
Thank you, James.
That's all I have, except for a field trip, but they failed to...
James, I apologize, but could I offer a clarification on debt exclusion? I'm not going to disagree with you, I'm just going to clarify how debt exclusion, does that be appropriate?
Probably not at this time, Steve, but it's something we can, we can bring up at another time.
The field trip, trip, excuse me, not trip, field trip has no date on it, so we're going to bring it back in, in February, so I'm not sure about that. It's lit, I...
With that, any reports from the committee this evening?
Nope.
All right. To the point, kind of echoing, I think, the sentiment we've had this evening and those from the public as well, and that's something we'll definitely allow some more public opportunities to share. But one is, I do have that plea, and I, I'm frustrated at the same things that I think everyone else is. I think somehow the school's become a personal issue, and it really is a community issue. It's, it's not about individuals, it's about the greater good of our community. And I do encourage those that are going to get involved in this next phase of, of potentially seeing a facility built, that we remember that everybody is in it, is an individual, and that they have feelings and they're passionate about things and one way or another. We all have our situations in life as well, whether financial or, or past history on these things, and I hope we, we keep each other's feelings in mind as we work with each other, as we hopefully get to a common goal of, of hopefully seeing a new facility for our, for the students of our community. Not only that, I've been able to see what a school can, it's not just a place for education for our young people, but it is a community facility, hopefully a place that eventually that all members of the community can come to, whether it's using it for a meeting after school or for a large event, that this facility is not just about education, which it is the main focus for us as a school committee, but that it is potentially a facility that's going to be used to enhance our community. And I know there's a lot of great minds in our community that are working towards this, and hopefully, they will continue to, to stay involved, stay passionate about it, and, put in their support and their expertise, so...
Dave, I have one more thing I forgot to ask and just share.
Just to update you, today at the Governor John Carver building, we had a transformer fail on the utility pole right to the right of the building. It exploded at approximately 10:00 a.m. I happened to be on site when it happened, and police and fire chief both responded. They were on, on scene within a couple minutes. It was a small fire, it extinguished itself, and then N-Star had to replace the transformer. They finished, we restored full power at 3:15. So, from 10 to 3 o'clock, we had about 2/3 of our power in the building, so some classrooms did not have lighting. Part of the cafeteria didn't have lighting. The P.E. system was out, but it was a pretty quick response from N-Star, so we'll be all set for tomorrow.
Thanks, Dave.
And it was a warm day.
Yes, it was a warm day, and for those of you parents that probably had some good stories from your students today when they got home explaining the big explosion, now you have an idea of what was going on.
I just have one other announcement. On Friday, this Friday, it's a, it's a professional development day for teachers, and the children will be home with their families. And there will be a drill by the Carver police, an active shooter drill in the elementary school because they've never done one there before, and so we had to pick a day when there was no children in the building, and they will be using some rather realistic pieces of equipment, but there will be no children there, so you shouldn't worry, but the community should know that they are doing so.
So, if you are driving by on Friday, be aware, there is, will be activities going on at the elementary school, and everything, yes, everything is okay. Yes. So, again, we thank everyone for coming tonight and accept a motion to...
Make a motion to a John?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, that.
All those in favor?
Bye.
Good night, guys.
Thank you.